Rockdale County. And happy Tuesday to you. Today is Tuesday, October the 10th. And it is shortly after the 10:00 AM hour. We're here at 901 Main Street in the Assembly Hall in the heart of Old Town Conyers. We're calling our meeting to order this morning. We recognize that we have a very robust crowd this morning. And I think I've been told that we've got an overflow crowd as well over in the auditorium. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, very good, very good. So, good morning to the folks that are over there. They can hear this broadcast as we continue to move forward this morning. We want to start, as we always do, with our invocation and pledge of allegiance. None other than our own Director of EMA, Director Dan Morgan, is going to lead us in invocation and pledge. Good morning, Director.
Good morning Chairman, Commissioners. Can we pray? Dear Lord, we give thanks for you and thanks to you for another beautiful day with our loved ones. As we conduct our day, you are forever in our hearts and thoughts. We ask for your love and guidance in everything we do. We ask for wisdom to discern the best path forward in all matters before us today. We ask for protection, comfort, and healing for those in need of your loving hands as they go through grief and illness. Be with those families struggling with war and famine and natural disasters. Be with us here today and every day. Amen. Please join me for the pledge. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you Director Morgan. Certainly do appreciate you leading us in the invocation and the pledge this morning. Commissioners, we're moving right on to item number four, which is the approval of the agenda. What is your pleasure?
I move to approve the agenda as published.
I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is the approval of the minutes from September the 26th, 2023, and October 3rd of 2023. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There's no unfinished business this morning.
So, Mr. Chairman, I apologize to interrupt, but we do have a special recognition this morning for item three. And it is with the Fire Chief and the Fire and Rescue Department. So, we have a, I believe we have a video prepared for this one as well.
All right. Chief Mc.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioners, I'm super excited to be recognizing this extraordinary young man and his extraordinary story. As Breast Cancer Month, the month of October, September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And I did not receive this information in time to present it in September, but it's too extraordinary of a story to wait till next year. See, this young man is not only a childhood cancer survivor, he's also a Rockdale County Fire Rescue firefighter. Firefighter Archie Collins. And here's his story. Please play the video.
I am a firefighter EMT. I'm a second generation firefighter. St. Jude, they definitely changed my dream of wanting to help people. St. Jude was my hero. I wouldn't be someone else's hero.
My son Archie was diagnosed with cancer June 2012.
I wasn't feeling too well, and I had a big golf ball sized lymph node. We went to four or five different hospitals and no one found anything. So, we just kept going on. I mean, I wasn't feeling too bad until like later on, and I was running track. I fell out and I was diagnosed with non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, stage three cancer.
I was just in a state of shock. I, I just, I just thought, oh my God, my baby is finna die.
That was a blow. That was a blow. I didn't want to lose my grandson, but don't ever give up on hope.
So, I was referred to St. Jude. As soon as we got there, then the nurses explained everything they were doing to me, whether it was putting an IV in me or giving me certain medication. Just to see the paintings on the wall from different children, the pictures, the story, it was like, I said, what kind of hospital is this? Like, you know, it's amazing. It's like a little heaven.
It just was a place, I don't know what heaven is, but it was like heaven. There was positive doctors. Everybody in St. Jude was so positive.
We never received a bill for anything. It definitely took a lot of stress off of my parents.
It was truly a blessing because I know I couldn't afford the treatments, the medicine. No parent had to worry about that, and I'm so grateful. We made it through.
At the darkest time, at the lowest time in my life, I found the best moments at St. Jude. It's been 11 years so or so I've been in remission, and I've, I've been able to live a normal life because of St. Jude.
Cancer, that has changed him completely for the better. He's taken the good part and used it to grow.
I'm so proud. He wanted to be a hero to help other people.
I can truly say I'm grateful and thankful because everyone has to help everyone. We all need each other in this walk of life. My meaning in life now is to just do as much good in the world and give all the glory to God and show them also that St. Jude helped me do this.
I received this video from him September 22nd and must have watched it. I don't know how many times, and each time, just as today, I tear up. The inspiration and hope of that video and to children that are going through the same thing and those parents, I hope they see this video and know that they're inspired and they're hopeful. Want to let firefighter Collins say a few words if that's.
Absolutely.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you guys for having me here. It's truly a blessing. I'm just grateful to be here and thank you guys for supporting. And thank you. All I can say is thank you, and I'm very appreciative and very just grateful for the things you guys do, which all of you aren't recognized for, even my salary and payroll. With the roads, with everything, y'all make it easier for us to be a firefighter and to serve the community. And we really appreciate you guys.
So firefighter Collins and Chief McDaniel, what a way to get a meeting started. You, you've got a lot of water right here to put out any fire because there's plenty of eyes other than mine that are loaded with tears. What a heart touching story. We have a proclamation on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, and I'm going to yield to Commissioner Williams. You're going to have to tough it through Commissioner and read this proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I may, his family's outside.
Absolutely. Have them turn on in. Absolutely. And let's give them a round of applause as they come in. Well, hello, family, and welcome to Rockdale County, and thank you for firefighter Collins. We're going to take a moment at this time, and we'll yield to Commissioner Williams as she reads the proclamation on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Whereas we recognize the incredible strength and courage displayed by Archie Collins, who at the young age of 12 was diagnosed with non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, stage three cancer. And whereas we acknowledge the life-saving care provided by St. Jude Hospital, which acted as a haven for Archie and his family during their time of need. St. Jude gave him the treatment he needed to fight for his life and acted as a blessing to Archie's family. And whereas let it be known that Archie emerged victorious in his fight against illness and has been in remission for the past 11 years. He used this life-changing experience to grow. He became a role model and inspiration to children and anyone going through similar circumstances by following in his father's footsteps and becoming a firefighter EMT with Rockdale County Fire and Rescue. And whereas firefighter Collins joined Rockdale County Fire and Rescue on September 21st, 2020, during the global battle against COVID-19, as he embarked on his dream of becoming a hero. And whereas firefighter Collins has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to becoming the best firefighter EMT possible. As a result, effective October 10th, 2023, he will be promoted to the rank of Sergeant. Therefore, we, the members of the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County, do hereby proclaim October 10th, 2023, in Rockdale County as Archie Collins Recognition Day. In witness. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of Rockdale County to be affixed on this 10th day of October, signed by Oz Nesbit Senior, Sheri L. Washington, Post One, and Doreen Williams, Post Two.
I say glory be to God, and I just thank you guys all much so much for this opportunity. And hopefully I can do my best to keep serving the county and being the hero to others. And I just thank y'all for this opportunity and recognizing this, and it means a lot to me. Thank you, and I wish peace and blessings on everyone's life in here.
I want to say thank you to Chief McDaniel, Sergeant Collins. Y'all give Sergeant Collins another round of applause. And I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to the Collins family because no one gets anything done by themselves. What a special uplifting treat. Although this is a tear jerker for so many of us in here, I think as we now in Breast Cancer Awareness Month, thinking about what September represented as Chief McDaniel brought forward, it really gives all of us a very personal and direct connection with what's real in the lives of so many people that were passing by at church and the community and neighborhood, young people like Sergeant Collins. But the thing that resonated with me the most, as you begin each time to acknowledge your triumph, you acknowledged God, and you started by giving God the glory. And that attitude alone is what's going to cause you to go from Sergeant to Lieutenant to Captain and perhaps even Chief, as you continue to show the world in Rockdale County that yes, you can. Y'all give him another round of applause. This is, this is truly, Commissioners, what it's all about. I'm going to yield to my colleagues. Commissioner Washington, any comments from you?
I'm still tearing, teared up, but you know, I want to say congratulations, but it's so much more than just congratulations. It's giving honor to the Most High and then you recognizing what the Most High has given to you and, and taking that and wanting to give it back to, put it back into the universe. So, that in itself is special. But not only that, is that Chief McDaniel saw all of that and wanted to share it with all of us here today. So, I appreciate that from the chief. But as a mother and a grandmother, I can't even imagine. And so, I'd like to give special thanks for all the prayers of your mother and your grandmother that helped you through the journey because, like I said, I'm sitting here tearing up, thinking about even my grandson going through something like that. But if he did, I would hope that when he recognizes all the prayers that have gone through to get him to where you are, he's just as humble, just as thankful, and just as reverent as you are. So, thank you so much, not just for going through it, but being the beacon of light that you have become while you're on this side of, of the journey.
Commissioner Williams?
And I, I would echo the same sentiments as both the Chairman and Commissioner Washington. But I think, I think it's that humility and that recognition of service that really pays back the, all the blessings that you've received. And because you recognize that and have such an attitude of being grateful and thankful for all the care and concern and blessings that you received, you want to turn that around and bless other people's lives. And I, I appreciate that. I know Rockdale County appreciates that, and our citizens will definitely appreciate that. So, thank you so much.
So, as we wrap up this super exciting, special presentation, we again say to now Sergeant Collins and to Chief McDaniel, to the Rockdale County Fire and Rescue, to the citizens of Rockdale County. What happened this morning for all of those individuals who are working in public safety and who have chosen this profession? We took a pause to humanize everyone that puts on a uniform and let the world know that they're human. They're real people. Somebody's son, somebody's daughter, somebody's child, somebody's husband, somebody's wife or mother. The work they do is, is really a calling. He alluded to his pay and right in the midst of that he got blessed and promoted to Sergeant. But the truth of it is, I heard it all through what he said and all through the video. He's not here because of the pay. He's here because God gave him another chance, and he decided to be a vessel to give other folks another chance. We can go on and on. To God be the glory. Rockdale County is the best place to be today and will be in the days to come. Y'all give him another round of applause. Thank you so much, and thank you Chief McDaniel. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much again. Thank you all.
Thank you Sergeant Collins. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to excuse myself to see them out, and I'll be back then. But I also want to remind everyone that it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we do have a beautiful pink fire truck parked out back for those who wish to sign.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you so much Chief. For those that want to sign the fire truck at the close of the meeting, it's parked out back. It's a pink fire truck in observation of breast cancer awareness. So, if you want to take a selfie with, I took my selfie last week. If you want to take a selfie with the fire truck, you feel free to do that. If you want to sign the fire truck, they have Sharpie pins out, they have Sharpie markers so that you can do that. All right, let's try to gather ourselves and come back to our meeting.
So, okay, so we're at the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Item number seven, the consent agenda. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve the items on the consent agenda as published. I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Takes us right on down to the regular agenda, item number eight.
All right. Item 503 is change in conditions case 2023-02. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning property located at 1610 Old Salem Road Southeast, Conyers, Georgia 30013, from RM multifamily zoning district to the RM multifamily zoning district to impose conditions upon the amendment to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading this morning.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 504 is a change in conditions case 2023-03. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 2294 Irish Drive Southwest from RM residential multifamily to RM residential multifamily to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt the ordinance as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 505 is rezoning case 2023-13. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 2265 Zingera Road Northeast and Northeast Zingera Road. Zingera Road from R1 Single Family Residential to AR Agricultural Residential to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion.
It has been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions?
Yes, I'd like to add some additional conditions.
Okay.
Alright.
The first condition, I'd like to work out something where they, no, I would like to impose a condition where they have an extensive study for the floral and fauna and to make sure that there are no endangered floral and fauna.
Okay.
Floral fauna.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning Chairman. Good morning Commissioner. The additional condition that you're asking for is?
I want a complete, I don't know, study to make sure that there are no endangered plants, floral or fauna on the land that they're going to extract.
Absolutely. So you want a full-scale plant study for all historically growing plants within the area, that none of them would be endangered or removed within the surrounding area for this particular project, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And that's the only condition that I want right now.
So we had a motion and a second with the additional condition.
Now, is there, there is already a condition that they have to do a survey to make sure that it's not going to interfere with any of the water, the wells?
Yes, yes, this project, as all of our projects, have the water protection condition that is put within it, that it does not affect Rockdale County's water supplies or any of the areas.
But I'm not just, when you say Rockdale County's water supplies, I'm not just thinking of our water, I'm thinking of all the wells that are up there and things like that. I want to make sure all of that is protected also.
Absolutely.
So is there a way that we can do a study to make sure that it's not going to affect any of the water conditions?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess that is my second condition.
So do we need to approve the two conditions that have been added or?
I think that's part, that would be part of the vote, is that correct?
I believe the one with the Director Njoku, please, let's also, for the record, just so we're clear, what you're voting on right now is the rezoning. This is not the special use permit, that's the following item. So we want to make sure that the conditions that you just stated are in the correct piece of legislation. So Director Njoku, is it more appropriate for it to be in the rezoning or is it more appropriate for these conditions to be addressed in the special use permit?
As I was going to specify, the rezoning is one part. The second part is the special use at which then all conditions are usually fully laid out and put towards the other department heads so that they have full review for the specific items and the additional items that are already in the applicant.
So for the record, do I need to reiterate those?
I think so. I think what we need to do right now is to proceed with the rezoning that's in front of you and then we will take up your conditions and the second piece of legislation that goes with this one.
Okay, alright. It has been properly motioned and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Let the record reflect that I'm not in favor of this, so I'm not voting for it at all, but we will move on to the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so the second item and Director Njoku, if you would like to stay, I think that would be appropriate. The second item is item 506, special use permit case 2023-03, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended to authorize a special use permit for mineral extraction dimensional stone at 2265 Zingera Road Northeast, Conyers, Georgia 30012, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading this morning.
So I move to approve the second reading and to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Let me be clear here, as the presiding officer of this meeting, there will not be any outbursts, okay? We're going to continue our vote and we're going to make sure that we respect the proceedings so that we can move forward. There is a motion on the floor and do we have a second?
A second emotion. But where do we put the conditions?
Yes, in a special use permit. So there's two motions going on as before. There's one to rezon and then there's the special use permit. To rezon is one question, that is before you and right now is to rezon.
And we already passed that, so we're at the special use. So then we were at the conditions.
That's where your conditions will be added.
Okay. So do I need to reiterate?
Yes, please.
The first one is to make sure that there's a study on all the wells and all of the, that can be affected by this, to make sure that it's not going to affect any of the wells. The second is a comprehensive environmental study to make sure that there are no endangered floral or fauna in the area.
Okay. It has been properly motioned and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Let the record reflect that I'm voting against this piece of legislation altogether. Motion passed, motion carries. Alright.
Thank you.
Next item.
Alright. Item 507 is a future comprehensive land use case 2023-03, an ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County, Georgia's comprehensive plan as amended so as to redesignate property located at 1726 and 1830 Farmer Road Northwest from the medium density residential future land use category to the technology park future land use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading this morning.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion.
It has been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item please.
Item 508 is rezoning case 2023-12, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 1726 and 1830 Farmer Road Northwest from R1 Single Family Residential to O&amp;I Office Institutional to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
So I move to approve the second reading and adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item please.
Item 509 is special use permit case 2023-05, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended to authorize a special use permit for electrical substation at 1726 and 1830 Farmer Road Northwest, Conyers, Georgia 30012, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item please.
Item 510 is text amendment case 2023-06, an ordinance to amend the text of section 202-6B2, relationship to comprehensive plan, the table of zoning districts permitted in each land use category of the comprehensive plan and section 206-5B1, collaborative residential subdivision, the applicability of the comprehensive plan of the unified development ordinance of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended, changing and identifying the future land use categories of the Rockdale County comprehensive plan with a collaborative residential subdivision, CRS district can be permitted to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer the ordinance to the planning commission as presented.
I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, next item please.
Item 511 is rezoning case 2023-10, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 1680, 1700 and 1720 Walker Road Southwest from AR Agricultural Residential to CRS Collaborative Residential Subdivision to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and to refer this ordinance to the planning commission as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions?
I don't know if, she said 2023-510 is 513, so I just want to make sure the record is correct.
Thank you. Alright, thank you. 513.
Once again, it's been properly motioned and second.
It's very important.
Any additional comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item please.
Item 512 is rezoning case 2023-11, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 2470 Flat Shoals Road Southeast from R1 Single Family Residential to M1 Limited Industrial to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the planning commission.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item please.
Item 513 is future land use case 2023-04, an ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County, Georgia's comprehensive plan as amended for property located at 4250 Highway 20 Southeast from the medium density residential future land use category to the commercial future land use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer the ordinance to the planning commission.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item please.
Item 514 is rezoning case 2023-15, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 4250 Highway 20 Southeast from AR Agricultural Residential to C2 General Commercial to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
So I move to approve the first reading and refer the ordinance to the planning commission.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item please.
Item 515 is rezoning case 2023-14, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 0 Flat Shoals Road Southeast from SRC-CID, the Salem Road Corridor Civic Institutional, to SRC-MXD, Salem Road Corridor Mixed Use Development to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first read and refer this ordinance to the planning commission as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item please.
Item 516 is special use permit case 2023-04, an ordinance to authorize a special use permit to allow an expansion and upgrade of an existing recycling and salvage facility located at 2314 Dogwood Drive Southeast, Conyers, Georgia 30013, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer the ordinance to the planning commission.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So, Mr. Chairman, before we get down to public comment, I just wanted to make just a brief announcement that any of the items that were voted on for a second read this morning can be talked about during public comment. The items that were submitted for a first read, they are now headed to the public hearing process. So when I read the disclaimer, I just wanted to make sure that I distinguish between the two.
And I certainly do appreciate you doing that. Sometimes it can be a little bit confusing for folks who are coming out. Alright.
So if you're ready, I'll go ahead and read.
Go right ahead with the disclaimer.
Alright. As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in act of litigation, political campaigning or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
Alright, thank you so much. Thank you. I've got a pretty, commissioners and audience, I've got a pretty decent little stack this morning. We've got a pretty robust crowd here, so we're going to give everybody an opportunity to have their say and we will follow the clock this morning. So when your time is up, we're going to ask that we respectfully move on to the next speaker. And the first speaker I'll call up this morning is Ms. Betty Maddox. Come on up, Ms. Maddox.
Good morning, commissioners and chairman. My name is Betty Maddox Battle. I am the founder of a homicide support group, GRIEVE, which is acronym for grieving relatives in every violent event. I stand before you today, I'm still recovering from surgery. I haven't been here in a while, but I must say, I'm honored to stand before you. However, I'm disappointed. Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams, I've stood before you all, time after time after time. Not one time have you all called me to meet with me in reference to the senseless gun violence that's being perpetrated in today's society. Now, I have met with you, Chairman Ospey, and I thank you for that. But however, as a mother on a mission, I've experienced both aspects of violence. The judicial aspect and the victim aspect. And I don't have time for foolishness. We have a debt that we owe to each other and that's to love each other and do what needs to be done. You all are put in office to do what needs to be done for the upbringing of your constituents who you represent. And I stand before you today, we have to do it with collaboration, consistency, and most importantly, with compassion. And we talk about, real quick, about love. We can't use that word loosely. You understand? Love is the action word and we got to stop, we're losing our children. Our community is on life support. Our nation is in chaos. So we got to do something right here and I hope you don't take this personally, but you should know me by now. I don't have time to dress it up, clean it up, because we're losing our children, primarily in the black community. I have asked to sit down with you all. You know how to get in touch with me, grievingrelatives.org. Please, call me so I can sit down. We got solutions. And if there's a problem, then there's certainly a solution. And let me say this for the people in the back. It doesn't hurt home until it hits home. I'm going to say that one more time. It doesn't hurt home until it hit home. When I lost my son to the gun violence, today, I lost a three-year-old granddaughter of cancer, so I know the hurt. But I gotta do what I gotta do. And if I come at you and I come at you from a hard perspective, please don't take it personally. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak and I look forward to speaking with you all soon. God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Maddox. Thank you, Ms. Maddox, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. I want to ask that if you have a device, if you go ahead and put your device on mute, that way it doesn't interfere with the frequency of our operation and technology and so that the other folks who are listening will be able to hear as well. So if you would just mute it out of respect. Next up is Ms. Rachel Williams. Come on up, Ms. Williams. on up, Ms. Williams.
Good morning. Okay, well, this is off the cuff because I didn't know that that's what you guys are voting on today. Uh, I do want to say something about that. I am very disappointed. Um, I'm hoping that you guys find a solution and a way, uh, to not vote for it on something until you actually get evidence that it will not tear up the community, the ecosystem, um, other people's, uh, water sources such as, um, wells and that, such, things like that. Um, I will hope that you will want to do the testing first before you move forward with approving anything. Okay. So I really, I came here because my community is having an issue, uh, with rentals that are being built within the community. Now, the rentals being built, I assume if you put them on the market, would be no more than $150,000 homes. Our homes are 500 and plus. That would not help with the value of our homes. So what we ask for is support from the, from the board to, um, support the homeowners and not the developers, um, to make sure that we have people in place so that they are building responsibly. Um, right now, we do not have anyone in place. So, uh, we need an LIA, a local issuing authority. Uh, someone just resigned, so now you don't have one for the entire county. Uh, so I'm requesting, uh, that we stop with building until we get one in place. How can we make sure people are building responsibly? And, uh, right now, our community is having issues with runoff, with, um, with sinkholes, um, all kind of issues. I've only been in my home, it hasn't even been an entire year, and I'm having these issues from developers coming into the community. So not only are they coming in and developing, and it's affecting my land, on top of it, they're not developing rentals or homes that are consistent with the homes in our community. And there are some people who work, uh, in this county that live in that community, so it will be affecting their homes as well. So if it were you, if it was your situation, if you were me and you just retired from 22 years of service and you put your money and your work and your sweat and your tears to buy a home for your family, you would not want someone to come and build rentals right next door to your home that would plummet the value of your home. Aye you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale. Mr. Arlen Gibson, come on up, Mr. Gibson.
Good morning, uh, everyone. I'm Mr. Chairman and all of the commissioners that are here this morning. Um, really want to echo some of the same issues that, uh, Ms. Rachel Williams, we live in the same subdivision. Um, I, I, I just got out of the hospital a few days ago, but I made a promise to the HOA residents of, uh, McCart Landing that I would be here to go ahead and echo some of the issues and some of the grievances that we have. Uh, it's been, uh, it's been, uh, water runoff, it's been erosion and sinkholes in our community. We have addressed that issue, but we really haven't got a whole lot done. Quinn, a builder in our community, which we feel are building substandard homes as Ms. Rachel Williams has just enunciated, uh, in our community. Rental homes. I don't know who signed off permits on that, and I hope somebody can talk to us today who signed off on these people who are building these rental homes in the community. We know as, uh, from experience that when rental homes are in a homeownership community, it doesn't work well with the value of their homes. Um, we are trying to work with these folks as much as we can. We have come to the point where now we need a TRO, Temporary Restraining Order, uh, on them building those kinds of houses in our community. Mr. Commissioner and Ms. Williams and Ms. Washington, you wouldn't want that in your community. So I'm sure that I could hope for the full support of you guys and, uh, and our issue. And a lot of times, I, people tell you, tell us what they can't do. I really don't want to hear what you can't do, but tell me what you can do for our community. And we don't want a whole lot of empty promises, a lot of gestures, but we want some substantive action on our, we are the citizens of Rockdale, and we have votes, and we will remember whether or not, if you support us or hear our, uh, or hear our issues. And that's gonna be fundamental. Whatever happened to ruled by, by the people, for the people, and of the people. It's a lost art today, and I want to go ahead and let everybody here know today, everybody that's in this room and under the sound of my voice, that we will remember this on Election Day, whether or not if you were sensitive to our issues, whether it's the Rock Quarry people, whether it's McCart Landing, subdivision, we, you are here to represent us. And if you don't represent us, then we need someone who's going to represent us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. I do want to ask Director Njoko if you would just take a quick stand again, make sure that you, um, uh, all I need you to do is just simply give Mr. Gibson your card. There's nothing to talk about. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and call the next speaker. I don't want him to leave before, uh, getting your information, and that you can sit down. Uh, his request is to be able to sit down and gain some understanding about the need. Uh, he is right that they, I am familiar with, he and Mr. Mrs. Williams have been talking, commissioners, with, um, the, the developers, uh, the home builders over there. We've sent a, a team of our, uh, leadership team and myself have gone to McCart Landing on a few occasions. Um, but I think, um, the developer is to be held responsible. And I do understand there are some communications happening right now with the developers, so I don't want that to be missed. But if you would, Director Njoko, please make sure that if there's any gray area that, uh, Mr. Gibson is not clear on, take an opportunity to invite him over to your office in a focus setting to make sure that he can report back to the subdivision exactly what you're giving. Okay? Next up is Dr. John Lee Patterson, Jr. Dr. Patterson.
Good morning to everyone here today, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. I'm here, uh, on behalf of McCart Landing also. Um, I was a resident of Rockdale County for about 17 years, moved to Newton County, and my wife and I miss Rockdale County so much. Our daughter graduated from, uh, Rockdale County Heritage High School. We have a lot of roots in Rockdale. I love Rockdale County. That's why we moved back here. I'm concerned this morning, my wife's concerned of our future in McCart Landing. With what's happening there right now, with the environmental issues, with the rentals, uh, my wife, uh, is so nervous right now because we are understanding that it's a possibility that a hundred and some rentals can come into our community. I'm concerned about the communication. Uh, we were not aware of this. Uh, we were not aware of anything that happened. And I understand we're in the HOA, and I understand the process of HOAs. I've lived in HOAs. But I think there should be accountability. When people, developers, or whoever can come into a county and come into a resident, an area where you have people that live and their livelihoods there, their property values are at stake, I believe there should be accountability. I don't think anybody, any company could, should come into any neighborhood and be able to do anything they want with the repercussions of the people there in that residence. And I'm here this morning to call, and I'm, I'm glad, uh, Chairman, that you, you've said that there's some, uh, things in place right now so that we can start this process of getting this, these issues resolved. But I make a clarion call and I appeal to the Commission to please be on top of this because we have our livelihood invested there. Our money is invested there. Our children, my grandchildren, and I want a safe neighborhood for my children and my grandchildren. And when I pass, when we pass the house on, I want them to be able to live in Rockdale County in a re, in a subdivision where they can be proud of. And I call upon you to do that, to make sure that we stand together, unified, so that we can get these issues in McCart Landing resolved. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Dr. Peterson, uh, for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Next up is Ms. Katie Campbell. Ms. Gamble, Gamble.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Gamble. Take your time. Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here in opposition to the development on Walker Road in the Potts Farm. I live at the property directly next door to where they're trying to develop, and, um...
Ms. Gamble, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, that was an item for a first read that's just now started in the public hearing process. There'll be opportunities for you to speak at public hearings.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you.
Ms. Gamble, I want to tell you thank you for coming out this morning. Keep your eye on this as it goes through the process so that you'll have an opportunity to have your say.
Absolutely. I appreciate you giving me this opportunity, but while I'm standing here in front of you, I would like to address the, uh, mining also that's going on, which is out beside my mother's house.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, just to reiterate, which some folks have already said, that I think that it is in our best interest as a county to make sure that all the studies are done before this development begins, because there are so many people that rely on the water table and on wells, and on that community out there would be completely devastated if this was contaminated. And so I just appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to speak my opinion on this, and I'll be back to speak on the other later.
Thank you, Ms. Gamble.
Thank you.
And thank you for all that you do. Mr. Alexander, take your time. Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm from McCart Landing too. The issue that was raised by my colleagues and neighbors has been going on for a while, so we're just here to, so somebody can listen to us, because it's been going so long and like, nobody's doing nothing. So I'm just here to like reinforce, because we're here for that, and they have said what they had to say, and I'm with them.
Well, Mr. Alexander, thank you for coming out. Let me share, Commissioners, I want to share a little bit more because, uh, as the representatives from McCart continue to come up, I do want to share because our office is very familiar and our leadership team is ver, we are very familiar with McCart Landing. We've been out there on numerous occasions through the various different HOA presidents. Uh, I've also spoken directly with, um, the legal counsel that represents, um, D.R. Horton, who is the primary builder for McCart Landing. Uh, I connected that counsel with, um, Ms. Williams upon one of our last visits. They are working and communicating. The last message I received about two weeks ago, they are communicating with members of the HOA. In addition to that, because I don't want you leaving here thinking that, uh, your plea is falling on deaf ears. It is not. I've literally picked up the phone myself and contacted, uh, their legal counsel. But in addition to that, that's where our Director of Planning and Development, as it relates to the county's responsibility and accountability, that's where we come in. In addition to what Dr. Peterson said, I totally agree. As we continue to move forward, and, and a lot of you all don't have the opportunity to come out to some of our hearings, when we're listening to the developers and we're really giving them, uh, a, a, a real draft to make certain that they're communicating with members of the community and that they have a quality product. Some of this, uh, as you stated, Mr. Alexander, did take place uh, some time ago, uh, under the leadership of various different, um, HOA presidents. Whereas you have a HOA, you have a covenant, so that puts some levels of barriers with the county. However, uh, when it comes to approval of those homes, uh, that's where the county code system comes in. So we are willing to continue to work with not only McCart Landing, must I say, but all of the developments that are happening throughout Rockdale County, because it is important, and we don't want anyone's property values to go down. So I wanted to make sure, I pointed that out, uh, be sure you, uh, connect with whomever your HOA president is, and, uh, Director Njoko, we're gonna do what we can on our side. Please make sure you're penetrating through, uh, Dr. Peterson, I hope you're hearing me, to the, uh, representatives from D.R. Horton and as well, because the developer is accountable, um, for all of what is happening in that area. Absolutely. So, uh, but, Mr. Alexander, is there anything else you want to continue to say? You have plenty of time left.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for listening to us.
And thank you for coming out this morning and all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Ms. Catherine Lynn, Ms. Lynn, come on up, Ms. Lynn. Catherine Lynn.
I am deeply disappointed in two of you today, but forced to use this time to speak to something else. I have learned over the past four years that there is no greater harm, greater threat of harm to our granite outcrop than Rockdale County. Since 2019, this has been demonstrated not once, but five times, most recently just last week. Just one day after I stood before you and told you of our efforts to preserve and protect our outcrop, Rockdale County contractors excavating River Street were illegally dumping sludge directly into our outcrop. They decided that rather than making a mess in the road, they would illegally dump it into private property, environmentally sensitive property no less. So they set up a pump and positioned it over our fence to pump all of the construction sludge coming out of that hole directly into our rock, outcrop. Unless you think that this was simply muddy water, it was extracted from the roadbed, which is typically made of mud, rocks, and ground asphalt, which could have any number of contaminants in it. There is now sludge and sediment covering a large area of our outcrop. In some areas, it is several inches deep. This is not the first time that contractors performing work on behalf of Rockdale County have damaged our property. Can't cover them all in three minutes. In 2019, another contractor who has been awarded millions of dollars in contracts in this county commandeered our property for over three weeks. Without our consent, used it as a work and staging area. They obliterated all plant life from the general area and inflicted a lot of significant and permanent damage. Since the devastation that occurred at the hands of those contractors, it has taken four years for anything to grow back in the damaged areas. What little had started to return in that time has now been drowned in sludge due to the willful negligence of the latest contractors you have sent to River Street. All of these contractors are well aware of their duties to the public and their responsibility for protecting private property in accordance with the law. They're also aware that granite outcrops are environmentally sensitive areas that should be protected during construction and land disturbance. Yet, for whatever reason, contractors working for Rockdale County throw all of that out the window, because apparently they have the impression that following proper procedure and obeying the laws of the state of Georgia do not apply here. Rockdale pays millions of dollars for these projects. In this case, contract before any change orders is over 1 million. Surely that pays for following the law, adhering to proper protocols for the disposal of waste, and not for the illegal dumping of construction waste into private property. The last time Rock, Rockdale County worked on River Street, it took us two years and a lot of legal fees to achieve a resolution with those contractors. So I can assure you that I am well versed on the standards and procedures that are to be followed on these projects as well as the law on this. I am probably the last person they want to tangle with. Ultimately, you are in charge, and I'm asking you to personally intervene to send a clear message to Rockdale's department heads, your county employees, your hired contractors, and anyone else that you bring in to do work in this county, that failing to follow proper procedure, the abuse of private property, and violations of state law will not be tolerated on anyone... on any one, any county project. I do intend to file complaints about this with Georgia EPD and the appropriate regulatory agencies, but you were my first step this time, stop this time because someone around here needs to rein them in. We should not have to build a wall around our property to keep Rockdale County's employees and contractors from damaging it. I have videos and photographic evidence to show you exactly what kind of abuse and damage this property has endured. And I would welcome the opportunity to meet with you privately to show you that so you can see for yourselves just how egregious this has been. Thank you.
I want to say thank you, Ms. Lynn, for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Let me, Commissioners, I'm going to take this opportunity to, again, as we talk about River Street, I'm well familiar with River Street, been out there countless numbers of time. In 2017, this administration implemented a program called See Something, Say Something. Leadership is ownership and I hold every single one of these director to the highest standard. We can't be everywhere at the same time. That means that if citizens see something, I'm counting on you to say something. Anybody knows a little bit about my level of leadership knows that I hold every single employee to the highest standard. If there's something negligent or malice or malicious done out there in the community, we want to be made aware of it. If you have videos, photos, footage, I need you to call me immediately. I've said numerous of times, three out of every five residents have my number. So leadership is ownership and I'd love to meet with you so I can find out who, what, when, where, how, why, and cause. We won't dare allow a contractor who are getting Rockdale County taxpayers' hard-earned money to be doing anything negligent in this community and we not be made aware of it and put a stop to it. So I look forward to hearing from you. In fact, I'm going to ask Director Morgan, come on up this way to the podium, Director Morgan, come on up this way and I'm going to give her my cell number. I think I got a card here somewhere. Give her my card. Just, if you would, just give her Ms. Lee's contact number, make sure she has that because I want you to follow up and follow through with setting a meeting so we can look at whatever you have because I'm going to inquire once I review what it is that you have with any of our directors so that we can make sure that we hold people accountable. So thank you, Ms. Lynn, for that. Next up is Ms. Linda Scott.
To start with, I would like a couple of questions answered. I live right across the road from Smith Lake property. Half of it's in the county, half of it's in the city. And I ran into a guy when I was walking my dog. They were out there doing work for Rockdale County Water and I said, "What's going on?" And he said, "We're putting easements in." There's no rezoning sign out there? Could you tell me what that's about?
I'm not able to answer you right here, Ms. Scott, but I'm very familiar with Smith Lake.
Yeah.
And I can assure you that as you're talking, my department that governs that area and is responsible are also listening as well, so we will get an answer for you in just a short period of time. So I would ask that you would follow up because here at this very moment, I am familiar with Smith Lake. However, I'm not familiar with what you're bringing forth this morning.
Mayor Evans told me that they're not going to be any part of the overgrowth by you guys. And there's something planned and you know it. If you tell me you don't know it, that dog don't hunt.
Well...
All right? Now, why would you not want water and grounds and fauna studies to be done? I'm going to call the state EPA, get them out here. Anybody else who wants to do it, I hope that you will. Because the buck don't stop at your table. You know, you've got the state, you've got the governor, you've got all kinds of entities other than you. And to get a straight answer out of you, I'm sorry, I just, I don't believe it. I don't believe... Like I just said, you said you're going to find out what's going on with Smith Lake property. You know very well what's going on with Smith Lake. You just said it yourself, you know.
I told you I was familiar with Smith Lake.
Okay.
Right.
There's no lake there anymore. The lake's been gone for many years, the dam busted. Now we've got groundwater coming down off of that hill and we've got lots of groundwater coming up through the soil from springs. You can't tell me that if you start cutting down trees that it's not going to have an effect on runoff, which could turn into a bad flood zone for us. So I would like for you to... I'll give you my phone number. Go ahead and write it down now, okay?
I'll tell you what I'm going to do, I'm going to do better than that. My Director of Stormwater Management and my Director of Water Resources are both here.
Is that Dwight Hicks?
They're both here, they're both here. And they're going to walk over to you at the end of the meeting and make sure that you have their contact number. I will tell you again, yes, I'm familiar with Smith Lake. I don't have a crystal ball for Rockdale County, so I don't know every item that's happening as we stand here. But what we're going to do is we're going to make sure that we follow up and follow through, okay?
Well, and you know what? The time is passing and I work for Mr. Ahmadi's campaign and he's going to be the next chairman.
Well, let me just...
Taking your place.
This is not a time for political speeches. That was in the just...
Okay, okay, okay. Anyway, I'm just upset, I'm very upset. You go up on taxes, on a homeowner's taxes, and then you do some kind of crap like this with the mining and everything and it brings our property values down? You are robbing us. You are absolutely putting your hands in our pockets. You ought to be ashamed of yourself, all three of you. Now, I know you worked for the police department in Augusta, Georgia, years ago. You can't work for law enforcement in the state of Georgia any longer because of what you did with some young girl.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Thank you so much. All right, next up is Ms. Marlene Kress. Come on up, Ms. Kress.
Good morning, I'm Marlene Kress and I would like to thank everybody who turned out today from Rockdale County. A lot of you have been here in the previous meetings and evidently your voices have all fell on deaf ears. I live on Zangara. You're supposed to represent the residents of Rockdale County's best interests and obviously you have not heard a thing that anyone has said at the previous meetings. So what's going on that you've chosen to oppose your residents who voted you into office? I'm going to stand here and take my three minutes and express how disappointed I am in two of you. I think there was some confusion on the rezoning vote. I don't believe that you quite understood what was going on and I think you voted for the rezoning by mistake. I think it had been clarified before that you would have probably voted against it based on your wanting the studies done. But now we've moved past that, now we're into these studies, so the rezoning is going to happen. What's going to happen to us? I don't know. Are you two planning on trying to be Commissioners again? I don't believe so. So you have no interest in this. Thank you for your vote. We appreciate your siding and hearing the residents of Rockdale County. You other two should be ashamed of yourselves. I hope you can sleep at night. And I'm going to stand here and face the two of you and hope you realize how wrong What could you possibly have thought was a good idea to allow this to happen? You've heard that that property cannot be used for residents because Rockdale County refuses to put utility services on it. It currently has a body of water on it. It had had a well on that property, which means any runoff will possibly contaminate that and extend to other areas that are surrounding it. What's going to happen to the people who have wells around there once the problem happens? This LLC has been in business for a year. What type of financial compensation do they have? What will happen to those homes? You should be ashamed of yourselves, both of you. And given your history, you should doubly be ashamed.
Ms. Kress, thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Next up is Mr. James Rambo. Come on up, Mr. Rambo.
I also live on Zangaro, very close to that, before you even get up to High Rock. And the number of people that will be affected by this, the number of properties, the taxes on those will all drop because if you allow that mine to go in there. And it will take more revenue out of the county than you could possibly gain from that mine. Now, when they had the Planning Board meeting, the Planning Board asked all of the right questions and voted unanimously against us. Obviously, your staff that recommended this didn't pay any attention to what the Planning Board asked. And so I think that, and when I attended the Commissioners' meeting the other day, none of the right questions were asked. It was though this thing was already pre-approved. And so I think the two that voted in favor to continue on with this thing have made a terrible mistake. And I've moved from, I've owned the land and lived in Rockdale County for over 30 years. And when I downsized from 40 acres down to the 6.8 acres that I have on Zangaro, one of the reasons I chose it was it has a pond on it, a nice fishing pond. And that fishing pond will be contaminated by the dust that will come from that mine and it will probably kill off my fish. I think that I chose this space because it had a little bit of the outcropping on my land. We had outcropping on the other one up on High Tower Trail. And fortunately, that was in the watershed area and has a little more protection than that. Both of my properties have been already, as the property I'm in now, a tiny section of it is residential, the rest of it is residential and cultural. And I like the restrictions on the, on both of them if they're being followed. But I think that going against over 250 people that have property around there that could be affected by this is not going to help the county a bit. This is a suburban county. It is not a commercial, you know, it is not an industrial county. We're too close to the city to be an industrial county and people have moved out here because it is residential. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rambo. Next up is Mr. Edward Williams, Mr. Williams. Come on up, Mr. Williams. Good morning.
Thank you. Much has already been said about, well, this is the project to be taking place in Zangaro Road, I'm commenting on. Much has already been described in terms of the environmental potential impact and health potential impact. I wanted to stress the potential economic impact. Studies have shown that stone removal activities reduce home prices up to miles away. One such study found that residential properties located within 1.2 miles of a site sold for 20% to 30% less than similar properties located at least four miles away. Another study found that a residential property located a half mile from a gravel mine would experience an estimated 20% reduction in value, one mile away from the mine, a 14.5% reduction, two miles from the mine, an 8.9% reduction, and three miles from the mine, a 4.9% reduction. Yet another study found that stone removal operations have a negative impact on property values ranging from 7.5% to 36%. Given some of the other comments that I made this morning, I would like to strongly urge you all to undertake decisions that will raise property values over time rather than reduce them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I think this is Mr. Randall Fickers. Fickers, come on up, Mr. Rambo.
I'm addressing the ordinance that you passed allowing dimensional mining. I looked, DeKalb County has had dimensional mining for many years. They do not distinguish between dimensional mining or any other type of mining because of large amounts of noise that is produced by dimensional mining. And I know that they stood before you and said that there's not a lot of noise, the equipment necessary to pick up, the stones that they said, which are going to weigh 79,000 pounds, the dimensions that they gave, operated at 110 decibels. Their area that they're going to store those stones in is within 55 feet of the nearest home. At 110 decibels, 55 feet, the sound at the nearest home will be over 75 decibels, which the EPA says is damaging if that 75 decibels goes for an eight-hour period. For eight hours a day when they operate, all of their equipment is over 110 decibels, all of their equipment. Now, secondly, I believe that you didn't do your due diligence to allow the ordinance allows mining activities within 50 feet of adjoining properties. Does not distinguish that the adjoining properties are residential or not. The EPA standard for sound is 55 decibels at a residential property and that is not a 24-hour, is not a 24-hour period. It is at all. It is considered a nuisance. So anytime any person hears 55 decibels or more can do that, they're going to be calling you saying that this is a nuisance property and that by code, you must shut them down. I believe that also the eight-decibels rule of thumb that they said goes against science. Science for an open area is six decibels. From the mine to the front of the property, there's over 100 feet of open area where that sound would only be decreased by six decibels before it gets to the final 50 feet of vegetation. That rule of thumb might be eight decibels. I couldn't find anywhere where that was. I commend you for doing the, asking for environmental impact. I would suggest that not just be, as the lady said, the area disturbed, but in the EPA... I would suggest that it not just be, as the lady said, the area disturbed, but it be the entire property or at least within 50 feet because the ordinance that you approved allows them to go within 50 feet of any property.
Thank you, Mr. Randall, and appreciate all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Ms. Erin Goldstein. Ms. Goldstein? Come on up, Ms. Goldstein.
Morning.
Good morning.
I understand that I'm probably gonna be a bit repetitive this morning, and this is a topic that I learned of not too long ago, as I think a lot of people were caught off guard by it. I wanna start with, I've very much watched as you all stood at the people who responded here today regarding the mining. I'm very troubled by the stone-faced response and your ability to stare people down with no emotion in regard for the citizens. Today, you failed us. You were here to represent us. Today, you made decisions that will destroy the quality of life for the community around that proposed site for the mine. Whether it be noise, the silica dust that'll impact the agriculture surrounding it, the mini farms that are within two to three miles of this location. The water impact is more than wells. I understand that our drinking water is important, but because of the agriculture that surrounds the area, there are animals that rely on the streams and tributaries that come from the stream, the river that's around it. The silica dust is contaminants. I myself have rescue animals that are on the property. One was COPD. As soon as this starts, what happens to that animal? Because you have no regard for the citizens and what their wishes were. We have come out en masse to vote, to try and get you to vote against the mining, but you ignored us. Today, you sat here in a room as to describe a crowd that is robust, Chairman Ness, but to say the least, and you ignored us. We put you in the seats that you sit, and we can take you out of them. And you've sat here with a stone face and ignored us. You let us speak after the decision has been made rather than before. I want you to know, you have failed us, and I want to know what you were going to do to fix that. We don't want this quarry, the noise, the dust, the impact on the water table, all of it. Your citizens don't want it. You were here to represent us, and you have forgotten that along the way. I pray for this community that you learn and remember that that is your duty, it is your responsibility to represent our will, not your own. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldstein, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Mr. George Kelchek, come on up, Mr. Kelchek.
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
Commissioners, citizens of Rockdale County and the City of Conyers. I've got one public service announcement this morning. George Kelchek, the chairman of the Rockdale Soil Water Conservation District. There are 40 conservation districts in the state, and our duty is to protect the environment. So first of all, I know that y'all have received this information regarding the DeKalb's Green New Deal Summit this Saturday from 9:30 to 4:30. I've spoken with y'all regarding village habitat designs to save our environment. If you can't make it for the whole day, please make it at 3:30 PM. Greg Ramsey, villagehabitat.com will have a special presentation for you. But this is really about us and the future of Rockdale County. DeKalb County's taken the lead. Rockdale County needs to come out and see all of this information for free and a free lunch. If you don't show up, shame on you. I'm gonna be there, along with many Rockdale County citizens. Second, let me address, I wanna let all the citizens know what I'm doing for them. This morning at 7:00 AM, I finished our due diligence regarding the reference rezoning of the 92.25 acres at Zingaro Road and the SUP for dimensional stone extraction. Specifically, number one, silica dust leads to cystic fibrosis. It kills you. Period. You wanna be next to that? So this morning, I sent an email. Chairman, I appreciate your vote against it, just as the full board of your Rockdale Planning Commission voted in denial. Why don't we listen to them? So the email went, "Good morning, Rockdale County officials and employees. If you don't understand the word constructive knowledge, you need to look. Constructive knowledge existed regarding the endangered species and Rockdale County unique quality of space in the update of the 2008 Rockdale County Comprehensive Plan, specifically page 38, Significant Natural and Cultural Resources. Based upon this information, this morning, you have violated the 1993 Endangered Species Act. A separate email will reference the black spord quillwort. And if you don't know what that is, it's green grass." So that and the preservation of outcroppings. You said in 2008, this was Rockdale County's unique quality of space.
Thank you, Mr. Kelchek, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Next up is Mr. Thomas J. Smith.
Hello, everybody. I'm a little irritated, a little aggravated, because normally I kinda mind my own business, don't bother nobody. But I've been to all three meetings on this. Not one Rockdale citizen has come up and says, "I want this to happen." Everybody's talked about it. Nobody wants it here, but y'all insist on voting it. We've already had it voted down on one, and you come here, but y'all still want it. I don't understand why. Obviously, none of y'all live near it. And if I came up in your yard or across the street and blared my radio at 110 decibels, you'd call the law to me. You know? It's that simple. We don't wanna hear it either. But most of all, like he's talking, silica, it causes mesothelioma, cystic fibrosis, heart disease, lung cancer, and all this is right up against the subdivision that's got, it's full of kids. Because I've been behind that bus many a times when the children are getting on that bus in the morning. They seem to be happy little kids, and I like to see them grow up and be happy little kids, and not end up suffering from something. They don't care what they say about that dust, it's gonna blow over in their yard, it's gonna get on their shoes, they're gonna go in their house, and they're gonna do what kids do, they're gonna play in a floor, and it's gonna be in their face. They're all gonna get it, and they're gonna get sick from it, and it's gonna be on y'all's shoulders because for some reason, you insist on wanting it there. It's not in your house, I see why you don't care about it. But you know, just because it's low-income and minority don't mean they don't, shouldn't be cared about. And is that what Rockdale County is? We don't care as long as you're not a rich subdivision? Because the rich subdivision people got up and talked, and all you could do is talk about how you were gonna take care of them. But I ain't heard nothing say you can take care of this mining thing, get rid of it for us. We're just as important as they are. Absolutely as important as they are. And if you don't think we are, shame on y'all. You did take a good look in the mirror and say, "I'm proud of who I am and what I've done today." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Next up is Kathy Del Sol. Come on up, Ms. Kathy.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
Family of Rockdale County. Yes, my name is Kathy Del Sol. Currently, my husband and I are living on land conservation that we have for use. And our concern is that at some point, that the county might nullify the agreement that we have right now. And in the future, might want to make that property where developers can come in, and that's our concern. When we looked at, we researched what D.R. Horton does and what he's trying to do right now with part of it is land conservation as well. So we are very concerned about that because we love the wildlife. When we moved from Los Angeles to come to Rockdale County, that was one of the things that we noticed, you know, that the county allotted land just for wildlife, and that was like, wow. You know? So we are hoping and praying that the county recognizes that not only us, where we live, but other families would want to preserve the wildlife that's there. The next thing that I'd like to talk about is the selection process with developers. I'm thinking as we, the family of Rockdale County, that we should have a say in what the selection process is. How do you select developers? What is the criteria that you use? And we should have a say in how, in who you choose. So that's, that's all I have to say today. This is my first meeting. We love, we love Rockdale County. We are very proud of living there, and we just wanna be sure that everybody's happy and truly that developers, like some of the other people said, they come, they build the properties and they live, but we are the ones who are impacted by what they do. So we're praying that you guys will truly recognize, you know, what it is, what we are saying, what everybody's saying, to take it into, you know, your decision-making process and let us all be happy in our little community.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy, and thank you for all that you do. Okay, that, make sure I'm not omitting anyone. That was all of the red cards that I had this morning. Okay, all right, very good. So now we're moving right on into, oh, Ms. Williams, come on, come on up. Ms. Williams, you're the old pro. I thought you, you knew to have your card in here by now. You're a regular. That's all right, you're right in time. Come on up, Ms. Williams. Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, along with all of the other comments, we're just disappointed. We're very disappointed. It's not that Rockdale County doesn't want to grow, as we've heard, we want to grow. But economic development is smart growth. It's not just popping up buildings, popping up houses. When we, we heard one speaker talk about the impact that this mining was going to have on their community, and Commissioner Williams, she talks all the time about mental health issues. However, you all don't see how one decision creates those problems. Mental health issues are on the incline because of how we're making decisions and how it's impacting people. And so we talk about God. We come here and we talk about God, and then we vote for more liquor stores, more cigar lounges. How do we say God and pray and then open up more liquor stores and think we need more of that? And we keep developing and developing and developing. And the people are out here asking, "Stop it. Slow it down so we can get a what? A vision." We don't have one. A comprehensive land use, that's not a vision. If you don't have a vision to start with, you're just making decision to turn, to change how we use land without knowing, without having a vision before transformation. You have to, a vision has to precede transformation. We've been here all these years. Commissioner Nessman, I had you in my house years ago, and I asked you, "What is your vision?" And you said, "It's big." I said, "Is it Alpharetta? Or is it Lethonia?" And there was no answer. It's bigger than that. And, and here we are still today, one wondering, what's the vision? And, and maybe, maybe not, people will come back and vote for the same leadership because do we have better leadership to vote on? Maybe you'll be here, maybe you won't. But if you are here, get a vision.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. All right, we're now going to board comment. I'll start with Commissioner Washington.
I was gonna, in addition to this being Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I really do hope that if any of you all, like myself, have had family members that succumb to breast cancer, that you do go and take a picture and commemorate their journey at the fire truck. The fire chief left, but I did see the fire truck going around the community. And every time I saw it, I thought about my grandmother who did succumb to breast cancer, but I also think about the survivors. So please go and, and sign the truck and make sure that you commemorate those people on their journey. The second thing that I wanted to comment on today is that this is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So I did have a statistic where one in four, one in four men, one in four women, and I think one in five men are affected by domestic violence. That is something that I have been, I will say, champion of for years. I've done a lot of work on domestic violence, and I will say quickly that you have to love yourself and love to leave, and that's any situation that does not feed you spiritually, mentally, or emotionally. That's all I have for today.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Williams.
Ms. Goldstein and I held our second community focus group on dementia. Last week on Thursday, we had business leaders, we had law enforcement, we had mental health clinicians, we had clergy, and some of the others in the community to discuss the needs of people living with dementia and their care partners as well, and how we can move the county forward to become more dementia-friendly. And it was, I think, the most interesting part was listening, just listening to all that the folks that attended had to say about their experiences and about the things that they saw as needs in the county. It was just, I think I learned more than, than they did because there were so many resources that people shared that I had been unaware of. And so, and local resources. So we can use those resources to increase our information and knowledge and prepare to have a community forum, community conversation on dementia and the needs of the caregivers. It, it hits a lot of families. And then today, October 10th, is World Mental Health Day. And it's a day to talk about mental health and show that mental health matters. The picture is interesting because the purpose of Mental Health Day is to end the stigma and the discrimination. And that comes through education and through experience, and it comes by listening to people and listening to their concerns when they are experiencing a crisis. Those really are my comments today.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. We're still in the midst of board comments. At this time, I'm gonna yield to a couple of my directors to come up with a couple of updates that we wanted to share publicly. I'm gonna start off with our RWR customer service and Deputy Director Jamison. Come on up at this time.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
And we'll yield to the transition Thank you, Deputy Director. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Once again, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioners, citizens of Rockdale County. We are really, really excited about what we have going on at customer service and our business affairs team. Some of the things that we have going on is just technology-related. We are really, really excited. We've hired on a new business data analyst who will be giving us an opportunity to really dig into the data of RWR to make sure, as we're moving forward with technology initiatives, we also have the data to support it. One of the things that we're looking at right now is automating our enrollment process for those who are still printing off those nice Word documents and filling them out. We're looking at automating that and bringing some self-service into that arena where we can credit score customers on our web and kind of move us into that 21st century. The other technology component is really tying in. You all heard us say over the last few years about our new AMI metering information, right? We've, we had a few hurdles we had to get over, but we are anticipating by the beginning of first quarter 2024, to be able to connect that technology to where we can actually let our customers know through a text message, through a phone call, automated phone call, when they are having abnormal consumption at their property. So we are really, really excited about all the things that we have going on at customer service. We do ask you all to stay patient with us. We have a new, a lot of new CSR's that are a part of RWR, and we're really excited about that, because we have some bright talent that we've actually had a part, join our team. So we're really excited about that, and we're looking forward to everything that we have going on. The last thing I'd like to say is, we are actually working on some building updates also. So we're working on some compliance for ADA. So when customers actually come in to customer service, Director Hammer and his team, we've been working together, so when they come into our facility, they'll have somewhere they can sit or pull their wheelchair up if they want to talk to one of our customer care representatives. So that's it from customer care.
Wow, that's a lot going on with customer service. I really appreciate the ADA compliance and modifications that working with Department of General Services are making. So keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I'm going to ask Ms. Bean, come on up and give us an update about what's happening out at Costly Mill. We often get calls all the time about the rental of Costly Mill, and I've been told that you all are booked up for the remainder of the year. Is that correct?
That is correct. Good morning, Chairman and Madam Commissioners.
Good morning.
We are booked up for the rest of this year, and that's a good thing. We're now booking for next year. I have some comments that I would like to make. We have a lot of exciting events that's coming up this fall. But before I go into the fall events, I want to make mention, I want to give a huge shout out to the entire Parks and Recreation team for pulling off all of our summer events. We had such a great summer lineup from our beach reopening at Costly Mill Park, our Sunset Cinema on the beach, as well as at Johnson Park, our Friday wind-down events, our summer concert series has ended, and that was such an amazing time this summer, and our Hoops After Dark program at Johnson Park. So I just want to take the time out to say thank you to the entire team of Parks and Recreation, and I want to actually do a special shout out to all of our lifeguards and the leadership of Cooper Watts. They work very hard to help and assist with our events, and also our Parks and Recreation Maintenance Team and the leadership of Mr. Reginald Camel. So I want to give a huge kudo to the entire team. We pulled out all our events with no, no, everything was safe, no incidents. So I know Deshaun and EMA Director Dan Morgan would be proud of us, that we didn't have any kind of incident. So I'm really proud of the team, and we all worked together to get the job done. Lastly, Chairman, I want to just give a shout out about our Tiny Tots program that has started. We have 25 children that's enrolled ages three to five. This was our first year doing our Tiny Tots program. So we're excited, we're very excited about that. And our fall break camp just wrapped up. Last week, we had our fall camp, and that was a huge success. We had 25 kids enroll ages five to 12. So just to give the parents somewhere for the kids to go during the fall break.
Absolutely.
And last but not least, we have our spooky fun night that's happening on Friday, October the 20th, and that's going to be hosted at Johnson Park from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So make sure you check out our spooky fun night for the children on October the 20th. Again, that's Friday, October the 20th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Also want to make mention of our Halloween fest that's going to be taking place at the Sheriff's Office. I want to make emphasis on this. This is the first year that we all have collaborated. I want to give a huge shout out to the Sheriff's Department, to Stormwater and Water and Fire. We're all in South, excuse me, two. We're all going to collab. Instead of the citizens trying to make a choice what Halloween fest that they're going to choose to go to, we're going to do it all at Rockdale County Sheriff's Office.
I like that, yes.
So we're collaborating with them. And we've got a lot of likes and shares on Facebook, so I'm thinking that this is going to really be a big one this year. And last but not least, we have the Autumn Festival that will be taking place on November 19th from 12:00 to 6:00, and that will be held at our Parker Road Complex. So please come out. We're going to have the live car show, we're going to have live music, fun games for the kids, and food vendors. So make sure you check it, check us out there. So that's all the updates I have for Parks and Recreation, Chairman and Madam Commissioners.
Well, you, you kind of sounded like a Baptist preacher. You said "last but not least" five times. I heard you say that about five times. Now, how, two things, Ms. Bean. How, number one, how do folks, what number should people call to inquire about Costly Mill? What's that number?
That number is 770-278-7529. Ms. Jordan Hodge is our event coordinator there, and Ms. Ariana Adams is our operations coordinator. They'll be happy to take your calls.
And give us that number slow one more time, please.
Sure. The Costly Mill mail-in office number is 770-278-7529.
And for folks who are interested in the other events that are taking place out at Johnson Park, particularly the upcoming Autumn Festival, we often get, as soon as you all start putting the flyers out, we get vendors saying, "How can they become a vendor?" And a lot of times, I tell folks, well, if they put the flyer out, they already have all the vendors. But what's the number for folks to call you all and ask you those questions about?
Sure. Actually, Operations Manager Ms. Lavanda Bruton and myself are the point of contact. So if you're interested, and we are accepting new vendors, we're actually in the process of posting that on our social media pages. Ms. Lavanda Bruton, you can contact her office at seven, and this is the main office at Johnson Park, 770-278-7209, or you can contact myself directly at 770-278-7549.
Ms. Bean, you all keep up the good work. Give Parks and Recreation another round of applause.
Can I?
Commissioner has a point she want to point out?
Um, so Kevin, KJ, participated in the fall break camp, and so he was, he had so much fun that he told his mother, he, I was taking him and picking him up from fall break camp. He told his mother that he was having too much fun at camp, and so he needed to stay at home with his big mama, so he won't have so much fun during the day. So that's how much fun he was having. I told him I was offended, that he didn't think he was going to have that much fun with big mama, but, and then he's also going to participate, he'll be participating in the Tiny Tots. Yes. With basketball. He told us, we tried to get him in baseball, soccer, and football, and he told us he only wanted to play basketball. So, you know, this is, this is his chance, so we'll see. Well, we're excited. We're very excited about this. And I'm saying all of that to say that I think, of course, I've always said that you all are doing an outstanding job, and y'all took very good care of the children in the summer camp, because they all had a good time, so. Absolutely. We have an amazing team over at Johnson Park. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. So the last director I'm calling up for this, today, as we wrap our meeting up, will be the Executive Director of Talent Management, Director Holmes. Come on up, Director Holmes. She's always ready. I never catch her off guard. She's always ready. And come on up and tell us what's happening. Folks are still seeking employment, and there are some opportunities here in Rockdale County. Tell us what you got going on.
Absolutely. Good morning, Chairman, Madam Commissioners. We do actually have 27 different jobs right now posted on our website. Over those 27 jobs, public safety is always going to be a feature for us. We're definitely looking for different positions as we approach the fall. She mentioned about lifeguards. So Parks and Recreation, they've been steadily hiring and making sure that they have coverage for the events that they're having as well. So we welcome you to take a look at our website. It's on our main page. It says employment, that name button right there in the center. And Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to give them a name. Claudette Ransifer. I'm going to say that name again, Claudette Ransifer. She is our recruitment and retention manager. If you have any questions, and if you've applied already, we definitely welcome. I know a lot of people don't, you know, want to necessarily call, but you definitely can call and check the status of your application, so we welcome that as well. Main number for talent management, 770-278-7575.
All right. Well, thank you so much, and hope for those folks who are seeking employment in Rockdale County will reach out to your office and reach Ms. Claudette Ransifer.
Claudette Ransifer, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Executive Director. I do have just one comment in terms of my board comment. I had the opportunity yesterday to participate with the premier business networking social out at Ms. Loretta's Kitchen on Highway 1, on Highway 20. It's actually at the intersection of 138 and 20. It's in the shopping plaza there where the Honey Baked Ham store is. But there was about 50 attendees yesterday morning, and the topic was about professional dress code and professional etiquette in terms of business attire. We had tons of small business people and entrepreneurs. I really want to give a big shout out to Mr. Thomas Dean, Dean, who heads up that group and brought out, this is a regular weekly, monthly meeting that he has, a networking social with so many of our local entrepreneurs, the small business people who are out there putting a pedal to the metal, trying to make it happen on a day-to-day basis, and we certainly do appreciate the group yesterday and having an opportunity to speak to them about proper attire and being business and professional. We also talked about presentation skills and delivery skills as well. So it takes place at 8:00 on Monday mornings at Ms. Loretta's, out at Ms. Loretta's Kitchen on Highway 20, the intersection of Highway 138. It's inside the same shopping plaza as the Honey Baked Ham store. Had a great opportunity yesterday, and I think it was a great event. So Thomas Dean, keep up the good work. Now, Chief Sanders, any announcements, any updates coming from you before I go over to the Executive Director?
Just a reminder that on October 25th at 3:00 p.m. will be the business open house for the Judicial and Administrative Complex, and that is at JP Carr Community Center at 981 Taylor Street. And that's 3:00 p.m. on Wednesday, October 25th.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Executive Director Roberts, is there any announcements before the ultimate question?
I have a question. Are we going to have another one that's later in the day, so that people that are working can attend?
So this one is for the vendors at 3:00, but following month in November, we're going to have one in the evening for anyone. We just don't have a date yet for November.
I don't understand, the vendors, meaning the people that are seeking to, to do work for, on the courthouse?
Yes.
So most vendors or people are working at 3:00 in the afternoon, so is there going to be something similar for people who might need to get off of work, or because they're not at a point where they can stop a contract to go and listen to our presentation at 3:00 in the afternoon?
So there'll be another opportunity for them to talk to anyone, but not a set time at this moment. The 3:00 p.m. was done intentionally. We initially had it at 6:00, but based on the contractor, McCarthy Barnsley, they get more participation if you do it during business hours for the business event. So, but we'll have plenty of opportunities and information on the website and how to get, and they'll be talking to people one-on-one as well. So all they have to do, we'll send in their information, and we'll get in touch with people.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Executive Director Roberts, any announcements?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, is there any need for executive session this afternoon?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Happy Tuesday. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.